Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Vining.
Excused.
Germaine.
Here.
Lamore.
Present.
Felder.
Duke.
Whitman.
Here.
Stillgrave.
Excused.
Mayor Clark.
Present. Would ask that we all please rise for the invocation or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Guide our working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote peace and welfare of the residents of this community.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk, first item, please.
The first item is approval of the regular agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, I had no adjustments or amendments?
I have no, nothing proposed, Your Honor.
Council members? Councilman Lamore.
No amendment, just a motion, Your Honor.
Very good.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second. Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder, approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Person, Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, the amount should read $2,053,828.00. That's 2-0-5-3-8-2-8-0-0.
Thank you. Are any items, Mr. Pastu?
I'm looking at Mr. Sell, though. I think it doesn't include the supplemental that went out today. Oh, it does? Okay, good, good, okay.
So are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda? Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda for those present here this evening? Seeing none, motion. Councilman Felder?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and recommendations carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Next item, please.
The next item, under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearing, item 3671, CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPER, public hearing, and there are no written comments on file in the Clerk's Department.
Okay, very good. Mr. Pastu, you have nothing to start with, right? Okay, this time, I will open the public hearing regarding the CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPER, public hearing. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding this item, 3671? Any comments? Seeing none? Close the public hearing? Clerk, next item, please.
Under Council Action, item 3686, St. Mary's Gardens Subdivision Storm Sewer Improvements Construction Bid and Consult Award.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. We had talked about this at our work session last Monday. Administration is recommending that council award the project to E.R. Zeiler in the amount of $6,422,400, and that a total of $6,625,000 be encumbered to include a 3% contingency for that, and that the mayor clerk treasurer be authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the city, as well as authorizing the Assistant City Manager Finance Director to make budget amendments necessary associated with the ARPA funds and other funds from the wastewater portion that's being funded for this project.
Okay, any questions from council regarding this item? Let's make a comment. So the, this, the project that's obviously a significant project for the community has been discussed for many months, by actually years now, we've had this on the agenda, as we're trying to figure out how to resolve a significant problem with a very large area of our community that just were not built decades ago, that didn't require these items. So it's a significant project, we've talked about it many times for years, and as the funding became available, it's being moved forward this time. So those that may have questions about this, you could, I guess, find it here most recently at work sessions and council meetings, and probably back the last near couple of years. So with that, Councilman Lamore?
Yes, Your Honor, I want to make a motion that a contract for the St. Mary's Gardens Subdivision Storm Sewer Improvements be awarded to E.R. Zeiler Excavating Incorporated, the amount of $6,422,400, that a total of $6,625,000 be encumbered to include a 3% contingency, that the mayor and city clerk treasurer be authorized to execute the contracts on behalf of the city, that the attached professional services agreement with the Spicer Group be awarded in the amount of $710,000, that the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to execute this agreement on behalf of the city, and authorize the Assistant City Manager Finance Director to amend the city budget to increase the ARPA-funded portion of the project by $1,925,000, increasing the wastewater-funded portion of the project by $400,000, allocating $572,346 from the general fund assigned fund balance.
Second. There's a motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, item 3686, the St. Mary's Gardens Subdivision Storm Sewer Improvements Construction Bid and Consultant Award.
Counselperson.
Yeah, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Next item. I guess it's council comments. So, well, it is September, but I have an absence, so Councilwoman Germaine, you get to start.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to congratulate Judge Michael Brown for being appointed by the Supreme Court to be our chief judge for the county. It's an honor, and he deserves it. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that. Echo counselperson Germaine's on Judge Brown, that is an excellent appointment there. I agree with you 100% on that. Also, great, great things coming for the people of the St. Mary's Gardens subdivision. They've been waiting for a long time for this, some flooding in their basements, whatnot. This should take everything back to normal for them, I'm hoping, and the streets and that whole area will come to much better living quality there. So, long last, we're finally getting this done and getting this project started, so all I can say is it's greatly appreciated to see all the staff work that's been put into it, and I am grateful on behalf of the constituents that are going to be able to benefit from this. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Councilman Felder?
Thank you, sir. I, I just want to make the administration aware that I would, would like to speak with them at some point regarding the resident complaints and grievances with Oak Forest Apartments, not with us, but with them. We certainly have our own issues ongoing with Oak Forest Apartments, and there is some overlap there, but there are some independent issues which I believe have gone unaddressed. So if I could, with either the city manager or the city attorney, I'd like to sit down with them at some point and detail a path forward for the residents who are, you know, forced to live in these conditions.
Sure.
That's all.
Councilwoman Whitman, comments this evening?
I too want to congratulate Judge Brown, and what an honor, he hasn't even been a judge that long, and he does a fine job. And with the population of women that I work with, he is open and willing to listen to me and my staff, and that's something that we haven't always had with, you know, judges. They, so I'm, you know, I'm proud of him and proud to know him. But I also want to say that I'm looking forward to this Saturday because we're having the annual recovery picnic and the suicide awareness remembrance walk. So, you know, the, those are the community that are celebrating and problems that we have here in town and, you know, offering support. So I wish I could have gone line dancing tonight, but I couldn't, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just have a couple of comments, obviously with Judge Brown. He's been very active within our community before he was appointed and elected as judge, and again, so congratulations to him as being confirmed as the chief judge at this time. Events, I echo Councilwoman Whitman's, opportunities for those to recognize and also share conversation with the recovery event, but also the suicide prevention that are coming up this weekend. Past weekend, there was a great opportunity for those in our community to kind of celebrate, and there was the Fuente Celebration on Saturday at St. Mary's Park. What a great festival day for them, the children dances, and we're just fabulous. The food was very good, of course, as well, but just everybody there and opportunity to share in the community, and I had a chance to talk to the organizer and asked Nancy if, you know, she keeps this day, it'd be great to have it as an annual celebration over the weekend in the future, and I think it went very well, it was a lot of fun. So those are my comments for this evening. I'll see if the clerk's office has any comments this evening.
No comments, ma'am.
Well, Caitlin, I want to thank you for stepping in here this evening, you know, as we have some people missing here this evening, but also schedule says they came to be, so thanks for helping out and doing clerk's responsibilities today. Mr. Pastu?
I have nothing else tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and as we do, if there's comments to be made, just mindful of the rules of the chamber, three minutes to make your comments, but also please advise, please write your name, so it's for the record, and your residence of jurisdiction, and start taking comments. Any comments from those present here this evening? Okay, I can see three hands, I'll start at the front and work my way back then, I think. Yes, please.
Put my speech on my...
Okay.
My name is Patricia D. Miles, M-Y-L-E-S, of Van Bearin Township. I've been in Monroe a lot. I spend a lot of time here, and I would like to say that I would like the statue of George A. Custer that glorifies a man who perpetuated war crimes against Cheyenne people and others should be removed. It should be also destroyed. Also, the concept of manifest destiny that he embodied should be debunked as racist and America's debt to indigenous people reconciled. Difficult work can then begin to dismantle a system that allows the perverse accumulation of wealth at the expense of the environment and the social order of this country. Custer destroyed indigenous people in his pursuit for power, and that arrogance also got his own family killed, and that's outrageous, and I hope we can remove that statue ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Old school. My name is Yvonne Bomia-More. I'm 74 years old, and I might be older than everybody here. I grew up in LaSalle, Michigan. My family is part of the Kujuino's descendants, settlers of Erie, LaSalle, and Monroe. I am Odawa, and I am a Gichita, and I am French-Canadian Indian. I am a retired university professor, retired department chair. I have a master's in school psychology and a master's in clinical psychology. I made it a point of getting an education at a very young age. I attended Custer Consolidated Elementary School. I lived at the corner of South Otter Creek and Dixie Highway for 18 years. I attended St. Mary's Academy Boarding School for two years. I either walked or by bus by the Custer statue twice a day. It doesn't take a fifth-grade education to read the truth about Custer, how he was part of the murdering of women, children, and elders, and the mutilation of their bodies. Murder is evil, pure and simple. By having his statue present, you are promoting being a bully. He is not honorable in any way, sense of the word. The word courage, do you know where it comes from? It is French. Courage means to love, rage means rage. Courage means the rage of a loving heart. When someone jumps in to do something, to save somebody, it's courage. They're not thinking, it's the rage of a loving heart. I stand before you with the courage to say, "No more." I have been a social justice advocate for over 35 years. I am an elder for the Native Justice Coalition in Michigan. For 60 years, I have not said anything about the statue and its removal. Where does anger come from? Do you know? It comes from hurt. When you are angry about something, you're hurting. This lie being promoted by a community only promotes pain. It's painful for me, and the hurt I feel is intense to this very moment. I've kept my silence, but not anymore.
Yvonne, you're at 3 minutes and 20 seconds.
I'm almost done, thank you.
If you could conclude, please.
I am a water protector. I work with the missing murdered indigenous people. Every child matters, boarding school survivors. Central Michigan University, I got rid of everything but the name Chippewa for a reason. What kills a soul?
Yvonne?
Exhaustion, secret keeping, and who brings a soul back from the dead?
Yvonne.
Honesty and truth.
We have to maintain everybody's time the same, please, thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can I just get a?
Thank you.
Current residence of the speaker?
She said, um, she didn't say. Yvonne?
Yvonne.
Just your jurisdiction of residence.
I'm sorry?
Your jurisdiction of residence, is it?
Oh, Wayne County now?
Thank you. Other comments this evening?
Evening, counsel, audience members. My name is Christian Horki, I'm a candidate for District Court Judge here in Monroe, position being vacated with the retirement of Jack Vitale. I've been an attorney in the state of Michigan, and specifically here in Monroe, for 22 years, starting my practice at Leonard Graham &amp; Goldsmith here in town, and since then, at what is now Godfrey Watson-Horki, but was then Zerba and Godfrey. I have a general practice. I also have represented the townships of Whiteford, Bedford, Erie, and Ash, currently, since 2014, have been on the Dundee Township Board of Trustees. So I can tell you that I understand the, the problems that face municipalities, and will take that knowledge to the bench if sent there by the voters this fall. So just wanted to introduce myself, announce the ground for after the meeting if anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I currently live in Dundee.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening?
Bojoujaiak, Ginwa, Nishkan Kirokwe, Indigenousas, Borwaywadmiendaw, Pokaganeniyuk, Indibandangus, Michike Ondodam, Duagenak, Oropien De Da. My name is Julie Dime, Pokagan Band of Potawatomi Indians from Duageek, Michigan, Cass County. So I watch, your faces are all familiar to me because I do watch the videos every, every meeting. I wanted to make you aware of what Native American people deal with, with race shifters, ethnic frauds, pseudo-Indians who make false claims of identity to advance their careers, sell fake native art, sell books, obtain grant monies, and jobs meant for indigenous people. It is a big, big business, and it is so much so that we have an acronym in Indian country for it, it is called CPAIN, corporations posing as indigenous nations. They self-identify, they self-proclaim, proclaim heritage, they gain access to resources and opportunities. It's a shameful, dishonorable behavior. It is a clear and present danger to legitimate indigenous communities. These grifters or claimers use our stories for recognition while not sharing our collective community experiences in historical trauma and the violent settler colonialism. Our land, our children, our remains, and artifacts, and identities have been stolen for years and years and years, and it continues. If I announce to you that I'm a cousin of the Queen of England and expect royal treatment, would you curtsy to me and hope to monetize our relationship? Or would you verify my claims and get the truth? I have a question, why won't your exalted Grand Master Chief, or whatever he calls himself, speak out about the Indian killer Custer like every other legitimate Native American does? We see what's going on here, and may I suggest that you take a journey toward understanding fakes? Thank you.
Other comments, persons this evening? Yes, sir?
Yes, I have something.
Okay, please state your name and your, your jurisdiction of residence.
My name is Jeffrey Tate, AKA Bronze Eagle. I'm currently living in South Whipslanny, however, my roots are in southern Alabama. I was born in Philadelphia in the autumn of '51 and moved to Erie Township, Monroe County, Michigan, in January of '53. I grew up Catholic, attending St. Joseph's Catholic Grade School in Erie, and then I came up to Monroe to Catholic Central. It wasn't easy living in Monroe County. I had to deal with racial epithets every day, bullying, called the N-word, and told to go back to Africa or else I was asked, "What are you? You're different." I went to school with Germans, Irish, French, a number of different people. I knew very few African-Americans because we grew up, I grew up in Erie. My junior year, my class went to Detroit to see Gone with Wind. We returned, and my bus had already left, so one of my classmates offered to give me a ride home, and we headed down Monroe Street, he may have left at Third Street, and we're heading east. And I finally said, "Where are we going?" And he said, "Taking you home." And I said, "I don't live this way. I live south of town." So when we got to my street, I said, "Make left at the first light overhead." And when we got to the driveway, the driver, I don't remember which classmates they were, but he turned and his jaw dropped because I was living in a nice brick ranch with shrubbery trees, fenced yard. But how come nobody knew that I didn't live on the east side? I commented when I saw the poster online, and I stated that until sixty-eight, all people non-white had to live east of those tracks. I was born into a home with a TV in fifty-one. My dad was in electronics school. At three, I was in front of that TV watching what was going on in Alabama with the African-Americans. And at that age, I knew something's wrong with this. That's what prompted me to really study U.S. history. And that's our major problem. People don't know the history of this country, and there are those who don't want to teach it. And I'm sure that nobody in here would want to put a Charles Manson statue on that corner. And he killed white people. So you need to really start teaching the history. And as I stated online, if people really learn the history, we could maybe come together better. Because it's the structure of this country that's keeping us apart.
You're at your three minutes, Mr. Tate.
Thank you.
You have three ten. Thank you. So I know some others have come in since then. If you wish to make comments, please state your name, jurisdiction of your residence, and three minutes. Yes, nobody behind you. Come on, come. It's okay.
Hello, City Council. Colbean, City of Monroe. Everyone here knows where I stand on this issue. I have been speaking for almost two years on a fairly regular basis about the topic. I have been meeting with some of the people who made the long trip down here to speak with you in person for weekly, you know, daily, about these sorts of topics. Because we really don't get to hear their voices unless we invite them to the table, unless we invite them to have a one-on-one conversation with us and hear from them and hear their stories. Because it's not just them, it's a lot of people. When those resolutions were passed in the state of Michigan and the National Congress of American Indians, it was unanimous votes. People know how they feel. They've been told stories, they've learned history. It is a widespread issue. The, I believe that the city of Monroe can do a lot better than this. We are positioned in a really great spot. We're doing a lot of work on our bicycle trails and walking paths. We are putting art up on our buildings. You know, we're getting revenue from marijuana shops. We are trying in other ways to progress as a city. And we still have this blight. We have this divisive person. We have what a lot of people consider a war criminal. In our street names, in our airport, in our schools, on our, you know, in the middle of town, a statue. It's not just the statue, right? This is, this is like Custerville. A lot of people know this, even if they don't live here. Basically, you can't think, you can't go anywhere in Monroe without seeing the name Custer. It's on your addresses. It's literally everywhere. And this council has continued to take action by being inactive about it. There, by its own admission, this council said that not enough is being said to the public about this. There are people who truly don't understand his complex history, who fight with us constantly in messages, in direct messages. And we get a lot of pushback. I mean, I got private messages telling me to kill myself. It's unpleasant work to do, but it is important. Because if we want to have a unifying city, we need to have, we need to center ourselves around something that is unifying. Find a topic besides trees that are more divisive in Monroe. It's Custer. We need to see that council is willing to discuss this, willing to discuss this with actual federally-recognized Native people and hear the hard truths. Because you're not going to get it from groups that are fake. They're going to tell you what you want to hear. I urge you to take action. I urge you to pick something else. Pick something that we can all rally behind. Because America's makeup is changing. We are moving in a better direction, and we are going to be left behind if we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Col. No, please, this is not, please don't, we don't boo, and we don't clap, and we don't yell. It's just, this is a formal meeting to hear comments here this evening. So I appreciate it, though. Next, please. Yes, sir.
My name is Stephen Meyer. I live in the City of Monroe, Precinct One. And I saw this article that came out in July in the Washington Post. And it's titled, "The Least Diverse Cities and the Most Common Statues in America and More." And Monroe was mentioned in that article. I don't know if anybody on the council read that article, but there were two things it mainly just analyzed, which was the latest census data. And there's also a group that put together like a national inventory of all the statues around the country. And so this article kind of analyzed some of that stuff. And so among the things that it looked at were, where are there metropolitan areas around the country that are, have a lower-than-average diversity of rural areas? Because the common trend is that rural areas tend to be mostly white, and cities tend to have more diversity. And so the average rural area in the U.S. is eighty-three point five percent white. And the average metropolitan area is fifty-six point six percent white. And Monroe, Michigan, made the list as the thirteenth least diverse metropolitan area in the United States. Monroe is ninety point nine percent white, according to the latest census. And, and I don't know if anybody on the council is sort of concerned about that. Like, what are we doing that's maybe driving away minority populations? And I don't know, has, I'm curious. Like, I'd actually love to hear if anybody's had any discussions about, like, is there more that we can do to make ourselves welcoming to minority populations? And then when you have minority populations coming here and saying, "That statue is kind of offensive," and, and the council doesn't seem to listen to that. But yet they'll spend like $10,000 to polish the statue. You know, like, they, they were putting together this panel to listen, and then they're like, "Yeah, no, we're not going to do that, but we'll spend $10,000 to polish the statue." And in October 2020, there's a Proud Boys rally here in the City of Monroe. And I actually issued a FOIA to try to get some records about, any city records about that incident and discussion. And there were some council members that didn't respond to that FOIA. And, but some of the stuff I received was an incident report, a police incident report, and some private correspondence from the police. And privately, the police would talk about the Proud Boys. They would name the Proud Boys. They'd say it was a Proud Boys rally. But in the official incident report, and the incident involved like violence towards somebody that's actually in this room right now. And the official incident report didn't mention the Proud Boys. And the city, the person that was the victim wanted to press charges. They captured everything on video, as well as the confession. The person that attacked the person had a conviction of making threats against the IRS and a personal protective order taken out against-
You're at three minutes and fifteen seconds. If you want to conclude.
Anyway, okay, the, one of the council members challenged the city council to, is there more that we can do to like make sure that like the Proud Boys aren't welcome?
You're concluding your comment, please.
All right. Yeah, you can do more to make sure the Proud Boys aren't welcome in Monroe. And some members explicitly refused to do that.
Stephen, just one question real quick, because I think just sort of clarity at the beginning. You, what article was that, or what news, or what publication?
Can I hand it in to the clerk?
No.
It was, it was the Washington Post. It was July fifteenth.
It was the Washington Post, July fifteenth. The title was, "The Least Diverse Cities and the Most Common Statues in America and More."
That's what I needed.
Okay.
Because I may have read it, but I'm going to go back and look at it. So thank you. Because I think, as I recall, that, you know, metropolitan areas and what jurisdiction they use, the cities versus counties and what they consider. But I'll look at that. Next comment, please.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Asia Hawthorne, City of Monroe. For ten years officially, this past weekend. I can speak to what Stephen was just saying as a woman of color who's not originally from Monroe. The sight of the Custer statue literally made me want to vomit. I have no other, I have no nicer way to say it. I had a visceral reaction when I saw it. My boyfriend at the time, who was a white gentleman, invited me here for the Jazz Fest. I took one look at this statue in the heart of Monroe, Michigan's downtown, and I said, "Why did you bring me here? Am I welcome here?" All because of the sight of that George Custer monument. It's not just a statue, it's a monument. It's something that people look to, they respect it, they celebrate everything that he did, but then they ignore all the bad things that he did as well. I literally told him I could never live here. He begged, he pleaded, he said Monroe was not like this. I took action with Good Trouble Monroe in 2020. We protested. We got over fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand signatures on this petition to either remove the statue, put it in the museum, relocate it back to Soldiers and Sailors Park, where it was originally located, or just completely donate it somewhere else. I appreciate the city and city council's efforts for what you did. I kind of lost track of everything because it was, it was a lot of confusion, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm an intelligent woman. I was unable to keep up with what the final outcome really is. There was all these meetings, and then discussions, and then, oh, no, no, we're not going to do this, we're going to do that. And I would just love clarification as to where we stand, what happened with the plaque that was supposed to be mounted, with the more accurate details of who George Custer was. I just really want you to know that when people say that something is hurtful, please listen to us. I know everyone in this room cannot relate to our struggle and where we're coming from. But when I tell you I had a visceral reaction to this statue, please believe me. And that's all I have to say. I would love to see it relocated. Thank you. Because I don't think it represents Monroe properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes. Name and jurisdiction of residence, please.
French Town, Shawna Farley, four eight one six two. I wanted to talk and tell you that I was born here. I went to Custer schools and colored in Custer coloring books. During Thanksgiving, I had to pick if I wanted to be an Indian or a pilgrim. And we put on construction paper hats and talked about this huge table where we exchanged food for peace. I sang Ten Little Indians as I learned how to add and subtract. I did not realize the magnitude or history singing until there was none. I watched Pocahontas and Peter Pan. Again, no understanding of how damaging characterization of Indians is. I was told that I was a Cherokee princess in my bloodline. I am not Native. The Indian killer, Native children, Native women, the Sand Creek massacre, the loss, is the Native experience of Custer. Our historic blanket of indulgence towards natives in Monroe, those pretending I'm Indian, is a tool used to feel entitled to speak on behalf. My great-grandfather said he was, my online registry said he was. I feel entitled to do so, and who are you to tell me otherwise? The construction paper feather practice. An authentic eagle feather in possession is against federal law. Online ancestry does not make you eligible. If that hurts or makes someone a rape, so be it. You are not above the law. Individuals of certifiable Native American ancestry enrolled in the federally-recognized tribe are legally allowed. Their enrollment preserves their unique character and traditions of each tribe. Anything less threatens tribal sovereignty. Can you recognize the threat? Prestigious professional positions and other material benefits are stakeholders. Erasing or counterfeit culture is promoting stereotypes, imagery, misconceptions, misuse, and abuse at the expense of Native people. How do we listen when we only silence? Or act when we cannot move, or unite if all we see is white? Remaining in front and center is the symbol of, you don't belong here. Disguised as a feel-good narrative, here on the agenda where white supremacy hides. Pull out the chair and own the mistakes referenced in previous council meetings, the Five White Guys Club. Past you referred to Members Mayor Clark, Mark Cochran, Andy Clark, and the County Museum, Brian Egan. Counsel, acknowledge it isn't enough. The National Congress of Indians who are speaking across the United States, the federally-recognized tribes of Michigan repeatedly asked to be invited to your table of decisions. No one has pulled out the chair yet. The legitimacy of their existence and their history here, their children then and now, their side of Custer, listen, act, unite, put down the feathers. People and leaders, make room for the federally-recognized. In Michigan, there are twelve unified tribes asking you to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments here this evening from those present? Any further, yes?
Hi, everybody. Katie Beth Davis, Monroe Charter Township. And I am a candidate for Michigan State Senate in District Sixteen, which does now include City of Monroe. Over a couple of years ago, I brought you guys a petition. I've asked, I've begged, I've pleaded. I have served my community. I have joined several nonprofit organizations. I have started my own organization. I am now running for office so I can keep fighting for people that aren't being heard. I told you guys several times, I was never going to go away from this. If I have to dedicate my entire life to getting people's voices heard, minorities' voices heard, then so be it. My son today had his first day of first grade at Custer Elementary, where I am one of the only few parents that is a member of the PTO. I promise on everything that I love. I have never been so determined to get this symbol of hatred and racism out of this county. The chances of me winning are very, very small. I know that. But I also do now have a platform until November eighth. And then, in the political spectrum of things, I'm only thirty-eight years old. I figured if I get to like Trump-Biden time, like something will crack eventually. But until then, this is what's going to happen. And if we got to put a billboard on seventy-five, so be it. If we got to put one on Monroe Street, so be it. If we have to have a hundred more protests, so be it. But one day, you all are going to listen. I do appreciate your service to your community. I will say, I have volunteered hundreds of hours in this community. I've attended so many events. And it'd be nice to see you all show up to a lot more of them. So thank you so much.
Other comments from those present? Yes, sir. Name and address of jurisdiction, please.
Natsburg, Pine Creek Indian Reservation. So I don't live within the jurisdictional boundaries of any state. I'm in, I'm here in my capacity as the vice chair of the Anishinaabe Caucus of Michigan, although I am also a citizen and tribal member of the Nautuasipi here on Band of the Potawatomi. I live on Pine Creek approximately two and a half hours west of here. And I've spoken at these meetings before, but virtually, because this is my first time in person. But I wanted to start off by saying, my mother was a full-blooded Indian. Both my grandparents were full-blooded Indians. Neither one of my grandparents grew up with English as their first language. They both grew up speaking their native languages, Boodwe Wadami in my grandmother's case. They didn't learn English until years later when they matriculated with, and went to school with non-Indian children. My grandfather was a lieutenant in the United States Army at a time when there weren't many officers in the U.S. Army without a college degree. Both of my grandparents, neither one of them were born citizens of this country. They were born citizens of only their tribes. My grandfather was Chipewa from the Bad River, Wisconsin Chipewa Tribe in northern Wisconsin. My grandmother was enrolled with the same tribe as myself, the Nautuasipi Huron Band of the Potawatomi. So if there isn't, if there's somebody more qualified or more eligible to speak on this issue than myself as a Native American, I don't really know who that would be. Again, I'm here on behalf of the Anishinaabe Caucus of the MDP. And one thing I want to clarify from the, from the get-go, it was my decision, it was our decision to erect the billboard against the Custer Monument in Monroe. You know, one thing I want to say is, like, to understand racism as a Native American person, you have to experience it. You have to live that life. I've, I had to go to court to get a personal protection order against a white woman. And after that PPO was issued, I had to, it was, she used the fact that I was Indian and she was a white woman to take my tribe to court, contesting the validity of the PPO because I lived on federal trust land and she was a resident of the state of Michigan. This went all the way to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, and then it was appealed to the United States Supreme Court. This was in court for three years. This wasn't settled until 2020, two years ago. When I was in high school, I started high school 30 years ago this week. I was a member of the swim team, and I grew up in Gross Point Park. So I was a member of the Gross Point South Swim Team. That year, 1992, the Confederate flag had been a symbol of, it'd been the identifier, it'd been the logo for the Gross Point South Swim Team. That went away 30 years ago because people realized that it was inappropriate. Just in 2020, two years ago, the state senator from this district wore a Confederate flag, face mask, during COVID at the state Capitol in Lansing. That's racist. And then last week, Katie Beth Davis and Colbyne were attacked, think, because it was understood by other people that it was their decision to erect the billboard because it says Good Trouble Monroe. It was not. It was my decision. And that individual, it was also brought to my attention, had, had claimed he could speak on this issue regarding Custer as a Native American, when he later admitted he was one over 128, so 0.7% Native. We are all united on this issue, all of us. Every single tribe in America, every single person that's a member of a federally-recognized tribe is completely united on this issue. We want it removed. We want it relocated. McGwich, for letting me speak.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Sean Farley. I live in French Towne Township. Speaking of, Katie Beth had mentioned voices are difficult to hear some, when they're here. It's also difficult for people to speak if they don't personally show up. So I was forwarded a statement that I'd like to read to you, word for word, as it's written. Good evening. My English name is Jill Joseph. My ancestors recognized me as painted horsewoman. I am a descendant of hereditary chief, Kaken Kan, from Amjanun First Nation, within the traditionary territory of the Three Fires Confederacy. The first memory I have of hearing about Custer is from my grandparents. They traveled to Alberta, Canada, and stopped in, at Custer's last stand in southern Montana. My grandma bought us books and trinkets from the gift shop, but it was my grandpa's face that stands out in my memories. He told of our victory and that he wanted his grandchildren to feel how he felt standing over the grave of a revered murderer and criminal. My grandparents didn't give us the whitewashed version of history. We were told of the little babies who were the same ages as us, who were killed just for being Indian, born of the land the colonizers wanted. The following year, we stood there at the gravestone of Custer. I remember my grandfather's face vividly. He dropped, jumped the fence and stood over the grave with his arms raised in the air, doing a victory dance. My grandfather, Sergeant Barry Baker, was a disenfranchised for serving in the Canadian Army. My grandfather was always proud to be Native. He taught us to be as well and to never be afraid to stand up for what is right. I would be failing him if I ignored the monumental insult erected to honor a despicable human being, a criminal, a murderer, a racist, whose white wife rewrote history to clean up his horrendous reputation. I have done my research, and it's not difficult to see the true issue. The discrimination continues. Native voices and lives do not matter. Why would this council support a non-Native chief of a non-federally-recognized band? Have you not asked for proof of legitimacy? I've seen the tribal membership cards produced by the LLC, very similar to a monthly gym membership. If you pay, you can have one. I challenge them to accept to cross the border with their membership cards. Those who support this racist statue to remain is all the proof we card-carrying federally-recognized original people of Turtle Island need to know in our spirit, that the windout of Anderdan and its chief are fake. Otherwise, they'd be joining and insisting.
Yes, sir.
This is an attack on people. This is comments, so if there's references.
I'm literally reading word for word, as I said I would.
Hold on a second. I'm going to stop the time for a second.
Okay.
You're welcome to speak your comments. Actually, your comments should have been given to the clerk to put in the record. I'm allowing you to read it, but I'm not going to stand for people to sit there and point fingers at others, especially the fact they're not here, and with one, one comment versus a both. So if you can finish this in the next 25 seconds that you have, without referencing individuals, no matter who they may be, please continue.
Sure. I'll finish reading exactly as it's written. Otherwise, they'd be joining and insisting it to be removed. It is integral to our healing for our voices to be heard, to be recognized as human beings by this council. Kaye McGwich, for your time. I look forward to receiving the news that this abomination no longer stands as a reminder of the genocide of my people. Jill Joseph. Thank you.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Seeing no comments? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jermaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Mayor Clerk.
Yes.